Okay, good evening. I'd like to call to order the March 18th City Council meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance or remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, bless us, keep us healthy, bless those that are ill, help them get better. God bless those that have passed recently, and bring our men and women home safely. God bless America. Amen.
Amen. A roll call Denise?
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Morrow?
Here.
Councilmember Olson?
Here.
Mayor Protem Ponce?
Here.
And Mayor Kennedy?
Present.
This governing body will be holding three separate meetings this evening in the City Council, the Avalon Municipal Hospital Board of Trustees, and the Avalon Housing Authority, and they will not receive any additional pay for those meetings.
Do you have any announcements Ben?
Um, I believe I have three. Um, let's see, in addition to the MTA presentation and public hearing, we also will have a brief presentation from Hilda Delgado with Southern California Edison regarding Phase II water rationing and progress on the underground utility vault, as well as a brief presentation from Jordan Monroe regarding an update for the vehicle noise ordinance and registration process. Then, um, I just want to point out that on the consent calendar under the first item, it's only actions from February 18th and not March 4th that you're approving this evening.
Thank you Ben. Any written communication?
No.
Announcements council?
Yeah.
Okay, Doug, would you like to come up and share with the community your classes that you held?
Good evening, thank you. Uh, my name is Doug Federal, captain of Avalon Sheriff's Station. I just wanted to briefly thank Councilman Morrow and his son Nick Morrow, retired deputy sheriff, for the time that they took in putting together a presentation last week for the school. Uh, Nick Morrow, uh, has extensive experience in the topic of drug use and abuse and recognition and training, and he took several hours out of his time on Thursday, and then again on Friday to come to the school, talk to the teachers, talk to the students, to share some of his experience in the field of drugs, and it was much appreciated. I attended the presentation with the teachers and it was, uh, it was excellent, and I very much appreciate it by myself and I know all the other people at the school. So I just wanted to publicly say, uh, thank you to Nick Morrow for that, Councilman.
Thank you for the update. Give Nick a high five for us.
Okay. Well.
Okay, presentations. Okay, so, Hilda, would you please come forward and give the update we talked about? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm here presenting Southern California Edison. Uh, this is to give you an update of the, uh, to the city entity regarding the Middle Ranch reservoir level, which is right, uh, as of March 17th, is currently 394 acre feet. The recent rain event resulted in two and three quarters inches of rain. So right now runoff appears to be light but steady, and in conjunction with the desalination plant is helping to hold the reservoir level. It is not certain how long that runoff will continue with no further rainfall in the forecast. So Stage Two rationing implementation occurs when Middle Ranch reservoir levels reaches 300 acre feet. The current forecast is as early as June but is subject to change. Having said that, review of the details of the Stage Two rationing will be presented to you in April. That will be followed with a public information campaign that will continue on a regular basis. Uh, regarding the underground vault near the Metropole Hotel, uh, we have, uh, the vault will be laid to rest, uh, this week on Thursday, March 20th, from sunrise to noon, and we expect to have a planned outage next week to remove the shoe fly. And lastly, uh, we're working with the Gaveralino Native American Band to have a reburial ceremony on April 5th. Uh, so we're gonna be, uh, working with the city to get the necessary permits for that to our, um, private celebration. Thank you, that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you.
If you have any questions?
Counsel, any questions? Anyone in the audience have any questions for Edison? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next we have a presentation in a public hearing from the MTA regarding the unmet public transportation needs in accordance with Article Eight, and we've got Arminia and Susan here from the MTA to lead that effort. There they are.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Arminia Saint and I, um, the project, Metro's project manager for TDA Article Eight, which is unmet needs. Um, I have opening remarks before opening it to public comments. Um, the public portion of this meeting is held to hear testimony regarding the allocation of Transportation Development Act, TDA Article Eight funds. The California Transportation Development Act enacted in 1972 provides the major source of state funds to support public transit services. One quarter of a cent is collected as part of the statewide retail sales tax in this county and placed in a local transportation fund, TDA Three, Four, and Eight, which is used to support public transportation within the county. The TDA Fund, uh, pot, is divided as follows. TDA Four recipients receive nine point one, ninety-one point six percent. TDA Three is capped at two percent, and TDA Article Eight receives a six point four percent share. By statute, most of the money, uh, nine, ninety-one point six percent in Los Angeles County goes to support the operation of our regional bus service such as Metro and municipal operators like Long Beach and Santa Monica. These services are funded in part by TDA Article Four. Additionally, some of the funds are used to support facilities for pedestrian and bicycles. This is known as TDA Article Three, that's the two percent share. Article Eight of the TDA requires that the proportional share based on a population, the six point four percent share, of the sales tax revenue be allocated to those areas in the county that do not have metro service because they are located outside metro service area. These, these areas are in Santa Clarita Valley, the Antelope Valley, and Catalina Island. Transit needs can be reasonably met through an expansion of existing transportation systems by establishing new systems or by contracting for services. However, if there are no unmet transit needs which can be reasonably met with these funds, the funds may be used for local, public, streets and roads purposes. While the purpose of these hearings is to determine how TDA Article Eight funds should be allocated, your testimony about transit needs may be useful to local decision makers who are planning possible uses for Prop A, C, and Measure R funds. The Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Authority, or METRO, holds a public hearing each year to determine what transit needs exist in your community before recommending how these funds should be allocated. LAC MTA staff will compile your comments along with the comments made at all the hearings, including written comments received before the deadline. The Social Service Transportation Advisory Council, composed of local residents and service provider, social service providers, will consider your comments and make a recommendation to TDA Eight Hearing Board. The Hearing Board will make their recommendation to the full MTA Board. The MTA Board will act in June to make the findings about the use of TDA Article Eight funds in your community. The LAC MTA's board recommendation will be forwarded to the state for review and approval. If you wish to submit written comments in addition to or instead of testifying verbally, the record of all hearings will be kept open for two weeks after the conclusion of public hearings, which, uh, would be April 9th, uh, and you would, your written comment should be submitted to the following address: Arminia Saint, TDA Article Eight Hearing, Metropolitan Transportation Authority, Mail Stop 99-4-31, Gateway Plaza, LA, California 90012, or sainta@metro.net. The public testimony portion of the hearing will now begin. Please remember to state your name and any organization you represent. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so we will open the public hearing and receive comment from the audience. Anyone care to come forward and talk about MTA funds? Nobody coming forward? That was a stampede, Avalon style. Okay, we'll close the public hearing?
Thank you very much.
Come on up Annie.
Andy Marshall, 330 Descanto. So, maybe I've missed something. How long ago did the city, the community get notification that the public hearing was going to be today?
Uh, it was, uh, it was advertised in, uh, Highlander on, uh, February 14th.
Okay, one time it was?
Yes, one.
Okay, okay.
And also it was advertised in Daily News and Long Beach Press.
Okay, so it was advertised once in Avalon?
Uh, it was advertised once, thus, or city.
I believe we also had a flyer at, at City Hall at the counter, at least for a week that I'm aware of.
Do we really think that's adequate time to notify the community?
Annie, to be honest, this is usually the reaction we get, in that nobody comes. Cause we do this every year.
But, but a bulletin in, at City Hall, which not everybody goes up to, and one time put out by them.
Well, this is, this is a perfect example of the council being accused of not having transparency. When these things are published, they're on our website, we're providing it in the newspaper, and if they don't participate?
No, I understand. I didn't, I didn't realize all those avenues, so I appreciate that, and I appreciate, now the community knows too, that they missed their opportunity to speak.
They can still speak.
Oh, two weeks. They have two weeks.
Yeah, they need more than two weeks because of all the public hearings. This is the first, the first public hearing that we're, uh, we're conducting.
Okay.
We have public hearings next week, so at the conclusion of those public hearings, we would have two weeks. So basically, you would have more than three weeks to respond, if you like.
So, cause they still have to go to the other areas that are served?
Yeah, you're not gonna have a special meeting next week.
Uh, TDA Article Eight applies to Santa Clarita Valley, Antelope Valley, and Catalina Island, and this was the first public hearing we conducted. And if you like, I can give you my contact info, so if you'd like to file your comments. You can either email it to me or mail it to me.
Okay, sure, no problem.
And I, in reality, I don't know that anybody's gonna come and object to the city receiving money from an outside agency to help us with transportation.
No, and I guess after we get the funding, we decide how it's used, or does this have to be a proposal for that?
Basically, the purpose of this public hearing is that you would get the portion of the TDA Article Eight funding, uh, your city would, uh, but we would, we're trying to determine if it's going to transit or it's going to roads and, uh, roads and streets. If we had a lot of comments that indicate that, uh, there is a need for transit, uh, then we would not allow the expenditure of the funds for roads and, uh, streets and roads. It would go towards a public transit. In your case, actually, in your city's case, it's, it's all going to public, uh, transit anyway, so it, it wouldn't make a difference.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, every year, uh, the, the funding has been allocated to, to, uh, but we have to do, we have to follow the law in order, uh, to, and to conduct a public hearings, regardless. Okay? Sure. Any other questions?
Uh, Susan Richen is gonna follow me by, uh, giving a presentation on all the fundings that METRO allocates to, uh, to City of Avalon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for letting us come to your fair city. Uh, if you look there, there's a, I have a PowerPoint presentation. It should say, "For Avalon," I don't know why it's cut off on my screen, it wasn't, but... So I'm, since we have these Article Eight hearings for that particular, these are state funds, as Arminia had said, there's Four, Three, and Eight, and they're divided up by population share, and then again by those who are eligible under those populations. So, there's the state funds, TDA Eight, TDA Three, and then we have the local return funds, Prop A, C, and Measure R. And those funds above the line, you get on your monthly basis. No matter what, for Prop A and C, and Article Eight and Three, you have to submit a claim, but once you submit the claim, the funds come to you on a monthly basis. Unless you waited till the end of the year, and then you get the entire share at that point. But, uh, Prop A, C, and Measure R depends on, the amount goes up or down depending on the revenues because they are all half-cent sales tax. And those below the line, Prop A incentive funds for your ferry service and land service, and then the call for projects, those are discretionary funds, so those are based on meetings such as this, or applications, and just depends on, on the specific fund. So here we have Article Eight, as Arminia had said, it goes for either your transit or your streets and roads, and your city uses it for transit. TDA Article Three is slated for bike and ped use only. And then we have your Prop A that was approved back in 1980, was a twenty-five percent share to, you can see the red piece of pie there coming out, that's, and then again, that twenty-five percent is then divided among all eighty-eight cities, and the eighty-ninth being the county unincorporated areas. Uh, you get your share based on your population, and those funds are sent directly to you on a monthly basis. And then Prop C, the same thing, only instead of twenty-five percent share, you only got a twenty percent share because security became important then, cause this is nineteen ninety-one, nineteen ninety roughly, and the funds started flowing in ninety-one, ninety-two. So they divide the pie up a little differently each time these measures or propositions come, but you still receive your local share. And then the last one, as you know, is Measure R that was approved recently, fairly recently, in 2008. This share is fifteen percent, and this share does, is the only share or only, well, it's a measure, the props stay there, but this Measure R is, has a sunset date, it's only for thirty years. But they are trying, they did try with Measure J a while ago to extend it, but that did not pass, so we have Measure R at least for thirty years, and that's where these funds come from. Uh, these are the call for projects funds, these are the ones that are grant-based, you don't get these unless you put some kind of grant together and, and request them, and we have a call for projects. The most current being the Avalon Clean Fuel Fleet Replacement, and so that's what's going on in, in that call for projects. And I'm afraid I don't know too much about them. Michael Richmy, uh, with, who works at LA CMTA can, if you want to call him, he knows about all these projects. He is the, uh, transportation capital person there at METRO that handles these funds. And then you can see all the funds together, and you can see through the years how much, this is fifteen years' worth of funding, you can see the totals there, and think, and you can see Measure R started later, started, you, even though it passed in 2008, the funds started flowing in 2010. And same with, um, your ferry, your Prop A, you can see your ferry and land service, your land service came later, and those, those came about through various committees. Uh, we have one called LTSS, Local Transit System Subcommittee, and, uh, people come to that and say, "We need some more money," and we find that money for you if we can. There's been some good years and some bad years, lean years, so here's how it's, the pie has divided up among your, that, that share for just this particular fiscal year that we're in, 2014, and it hasn't changed much from 2013, although you did get another, we increased one of them, I can't remember, I think it was the ferry.
Ferry.
The ferry did increase, so that's good, but it's roughly about the same shares because the overall pie. So this year, luckily, you can see that we're increasing to 1.2 million, which is good, and you can see over the years that we've reached the 1.2 million mark here in 2014. And I think that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions on other funds, I'm available, and, um, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we're going to receive an update from this... Oh, I'm sorry, we got a public hearing, pardon. Public hearing's closed. It was closed a while ago, but I'll close it a second time.
It's really closed.
It's really closed.
Jordan, would you like to come up and give a vehicle noise and registration update for us? Please.
So, as of today, uh, in the seventh out of eight weeks for the annual vehicle registration and vehicle noise testing, we have tested eight hundred and seventy-one, or about fifty-four, fifty-four percent of the vehicles for noise. Of that, ninety-five have exceeded the seventy-four decibel threshold, a failure rate of eleven percent. The average passing level is seventy-one point six decibels. That excludes, uh, electric vehicles, porta-trucks, smart cars, and minis, and the average failing rate is seventy-five point six decibels. Thirty-two percent, or thirty of the vehicles that have failed, have, uh, come back for retesting after getting some work done, and eighty percent, or twenty-four of those, have passed with an average of seventy-two point seven. Yamaha's a failure rate of twelve percent, Easy Go nineteen percent, and Club Car is ten percent, and that's all pre-retesting. Uh, only four porters or other type vehicles have failed in total. So we only have, uh, this week and next week, uh, for registration, so we encourage everyone to come down, as we do have, um, just under half of the vehicles left to register, uh, in those few days. Um, and don't be scared, cause if you do not pass, again, your vehicle's not being taken away, you're not getting fined, penalized, or any fees. You'll be given a temporary permit, that's good until September 30th, allows you time to work on the vehicle, and come back and get retested.
And I should add that in anticipation of the tidal wave of folks that are coming down, I've talked to, uh, the fire department and the sheriff's department about lending a hand with traffic and moving folks in and out, and maybe even operating the radar gun, et cetera, trying to move people through as quickly as we can.
Thank you.
If anybody does have concerns about the process or what to do with their vehicle, if it doesn't pass or cannot pass, they can definitely come see me here at City Hall, or send me an email at jmonroe@cityofavalon.com. Um, and then once we complete all of the vehicle noise testing for this registration period, um, I'll compile all the data and give a more thorough presentation about where we stand, what our options are, and what we need to do to continue to move forward and be as accommodating as possible through this process.
Thank you Jordan. Okay, I think that's it for the presentations this evening. Oral communications. Anyone in the audience care to address the council for any item that is not on our agenda? You may now come forward. Hi Jen, your turn.
Just a couple quick community announcements. One is that, um, we are taking applications for booths at the Spring Fest. Spring Fest is gonna be Thursday, April 17th, from five to nine, on Crescent Avenue, and you can come to the Recreation Department, or we will have on our website the application for anyone that would like to hold a booth for their community organization, their school club, their sports team, their business. Uh, we'd love to see a good turnout at that. And then I just wanted to remind everyone, it's a busy week this week, this Thursday, from five to seven is the fundraiser at the Blue Water, the Garden Party, which is raising funds for the Avalon School Garden, and you can still get tickets. You can come and see me at City Hall to get more information about tickets, and you can also go on eventbright.com. And then, quickly following that fun event, will be another fun event, seven o'clock here at the council chambers is the candidate night for the upcoming election.
Thank you Jen.
Big week.
Anyone else? Okay, consent calendar.
Okay, yes Mayor, there are five items total tonight on your consent calendar, one of them with the city acting in its capacity as the successor agency. Uh, the four items for the city to consider are actions from the February 18th meeting, expenditures totaling approximately six hundred thousand dollars, an item pertaining to waiving the harbor use fees for the Catalina Express free birthday trips, and the consideration of award for contract for the Joe Machado Field concession stand. Uh, for the successor agency, it is an update regarding the emergency repairs being done for Crescent Avenue.
Anyone in the audience care to discuss any of the items currently on our consent calendar? Counsel? Anyone care to entertain a motion then for the four items on the...
I'm staff on one to four and five.
Okay. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Call for a vote, please.
All ayes?
Moving on to general business then? Very good.
Yes, yes.
Oh.
We'll fire up the grill. Yeah.
I guess I should've stepped up when you asked if anybody had any questions. Um, I'm really excited, and thank you, and Jen, thank you, thank you. And, um, like I said, I'm real excited, and I hope that, you know, just really don't know what to expect, but we're gonna do it. Thank you. Knew I hung in there for some reason.
Right?
Thank you. I'll see you all there.
All right. General business.
Okay. Uh, four items under general business this evening. Um, item number six is a resolution encouraging the voluntary reduction in the use of single-use plastic bags. Uh, we bring this resolution to the council for its consideration in anticipation of a study session that we're going to be convening in late April, early May, um, on a potential, um, plastic bag ban in the city of Avalon. This item is simply a voluntary measure encouraging residents to think about their habits, especially when it comes to the use of single-use plastic bags. Leslie Warner, who I believe is here with us this evening, brought this item to our attention and worked with Audra to put it together. Um, I think it's a terrific positive, um, item for your consideration, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you have about that.
Anyone in the audience have a question? Anyone care to entertain a motion then on item six?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution encouraging the voluntary reduction in the use of single-use plastic bags.
A second? Call for a vote, please.
Oops, wait, I'm sorry. Okay.
All ayes?
And so we have calendared a study session for this, so we're gonna move forward?
We just don't yet know if it's going to be late April or early May, but it's one of those two meetings. And, and, and as a reminder, the reason why we've moved it then is in anticipation of state legislation that we want to bring you the latest and greatest on before you consider any type of action.
Okay. All right, item number seven.
Okay, um, item number seven is, um, findings and determinations by the City Council to dispense with public bidding and authorize direct negotiations with E-Bus for three electric buses for the city's, um, public transportation system. Uh, Audra McDonald is here with us this evening, and she has a staff report. In addition, representatives from Catalina Transportation are here as well, so I'd first like to turn things over to Audra, um, and please start. Thank you.
Good evening, and, um, this ties in with Susan Richen from METRO's, um, component where she showed the call for projects and other discretionary funds that the city's received. Um, the, uh, fuel replacement is this project, so that's the same grant that she was discussing that she didn't know a lot about. So, um, we successfully applied for grant funds to replace the trolleys which have met their useful lifespan. Thank you. Um, and we wish to replace the trolleys with smaller buses, trolleys, um, per the direction of, uh, previous city councils, um, that are smaller to accommodate the unique size of our city streets and are also, uh, reduce pollution. And we are aware of three manufacturers of all, like, all-electric transit vehicles. Of the three, only one, E-Bus, manufactures the smaller twenty-two-foot all-electric 22-foot all-electric transit vehicle that has proven successful in other municipalities. In California, Santa Barbara, State Street, all-electric buses are manufactured by E-Bus. They've been in operation for about 10 years with a great success. We also like the fact that E-Bus is in Downey, and some council members and staff have been over and ridden them and seen them. They're a very responsive company. So we respectfully request that you make the findings required to consider E-Bus the sole source, and then authorize the city manager to directly negotiate with E-Bus for the purchase.
Anyone in the audience care to comment on this item? Come on up, so the public at home can hear you. That's okay.
I'm Judy Greer at 355 Discanso. I just wondered, these are smaller, you say, than the trolleys that we currently have?
Yes.
Smaller in length, width, height?
Yes.
Weight?
Length and width.
And they have big windows, so that, are they open, or they- Is there a picture?
Um, okay. We can go, we can, we haven't decided on the model of the vehicle. We can determine that.
I just was want to be clear that it is smaller than what we-
It is. What we currently have is 28 feet, and these are 22.
And if I could add, we are negotiating currently with Catalina Transportation on the transportation system in general, and one of the items we're talking about is the configuration of these buses or trolleys. And so that, E-Bus has indicated that they can work with us on whatever the ultimate decision ends up being, but right now, we don't have a firm decision.
The big thing is that E-Bus is in Downey, the other companies are out of state, and to actually put this out to bid would, just doesn't really work. So it's more of working with E-Bus to get a good price on the product.
Well, and it's apparent that they're super proud of their price. I mean, that's pretty expensive, but if they're the only ones that make them, you can kind of set your market, right? Any other comments from the audience? Connie?
Hi, I'm Connie Stewart with Catalina Transportation, General Manager, and also the contractor with the city of Avalon for the public transportation system. Originally, we had come here tonight to discuss other matters, not realizing that tonight was strictly about, talking about this negotiation. And I wanted to be behind this 100%. I am all for the city going through with having been, be able to negotiate this directly. I've met with E-Bus myself. They are a wonderful company, and I know that we're going to be able to come up with a wonderful resolution for the city as far as which vehicles we do choose. And I would much rather it be that we have more control over this than somebody else telling us where it is we should go, when E-Bus really is a wonderful company, they've got a good reputation, and I'm all for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Counsel?
Smaller electric.
Have we identified, Ben, where we're going to park these and charge these?
Well, I can tell you that it's our goal to have them charged at the yard, but these are all, as far as, you know, parking and routes and configuration, this is all being discussed with Catalina Transportation and our own staff. And so there's a lot of items in motion. Mostly, we wanted to move forward, the procurement of the vehicles, take advantage of the grant monies, get that in motion.
And when Audra and Charlie and I went to E-Bus, one of the good things is that they're willing to train our guys-
Yes.
-on how to repair these buses should they need to be repaired. So it's not having to bring them over to take care of that. Our guys would be able to do it. And they really stand by their product. And they are very proud of their product. The buses are very interesting. It's just neat to go out there. It's just-
Excellent. Okay. Anyone care to entertain a motion, then, on this item?
Okay. City Council to adopt the findings and determinations set forth in the staff reports necessary to dispense with public bidding and authorize the city manager to commence contract negotiation with E-Bus for the purchase of three 22-foot all-electric buses, and direct the city manager to bring the negotiated contract and price back to the city council for review and approval.
I'll second.
Second.
I'll pro-vote.
All eyes.
Item number eight.
Where's Audra? Good job. Audra got a $950,000 grant to do this.
Yes, our thanks to Audra for shepherding this whole process. Okay, item number eight is going to be what to do in the event of a tie vote at the upcoming municipal election, and Denise Ratty has a brief report on this matter.
I think we're all pretty familiar with this item. Prior to every election, this comes before you, it's according to Elections Code 15651, the city must determine if there is a tie vote, if you want to have a special runoff election, which this year, we have budgeted $35,000 in the budget. And if not, then it will be determined by lot, and that could be the flipping of a coin, or drawing of straw, or something. So, we could do that too. And then, if you do adopt the resolution to have a special runoff, you have to determine if it is for strictly this election or all elections after.
Flip a coin.
We've done by lot, so I think by lot is good. What do you all think?
Are they flipping a coin? Flipping a coin's better than spending 30,000.
Annie, do you have a two-headed coin? Or a wooden nickel? Perfect. Yeah, by lot's fine by me.
Then I make a motion to adopt resolution providing for, oh, no, not that. We want to do lot, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Correct.
Then I make that a motion.
Call for a vote, please.
All eyes.
All right. Okay, item number nine is your fiscal year 1314 mid-year budget review. So I will provide the presentation on this. Gina is also here with me, in the event that we have any questions that I can't address. So basically, this fiscal budget update covers July 1 through, excuse me, this fiscal year is obviously July 1 through June 30, and this update covers from July 1 through December 31. Different from the adoption of the budget back in November, our confidence level has risen from 80% to 90%. When we adopted the budget, we had a $1.6 million deficit dipping into our reserves to balance the budget, as you probably all aware, are aware. The trends that we're seeing, with 50% of the year completed, 47% of the budget revenues have been received. Items like transient occupancy tax, warfage, and admission fees are increasing from year to year. We have expended 43% of the budgeted expenditures. Some items, particularly projects that have not been completed, will be encumbered or moved forward. So our deficit at this point has decreased from $1.6 million to $688,971, which is a decrease of over $900,000, requiring less reserves to balance budget. This has been accomplished through a number of different actions, not just one thing. We have had $274,000 in estimated increase in revenue, including TOT receipts that are $130,000 higher in December 2013 as compared to a year prior. We also received offsets from Paki Oldfield for the Joe Machado concession stand, over $300,000 in unanticipated successor agency revenues that we can use for overhead costs, $100,000 in construction and demolition revenue from CRNR. So that's part of the way that we've been able to get there. The other way is we've seen some expenditures decrease, including $200,000 in the amount that we budgeted for legal costs associated with the toxic case for Falls Canyon, approximately $100,000 in salary savings. Okay, so that's basically how that came down. A lot of little different, small things working together. It wasn't just one big action. We are expecting some expenditure increases as well. Stormwater regulatory costs, we're going to need to obviously also provide the chamber with more money, since we're bringing in more money. So those are all coming together. I guess the headline that I would share with you all is that we've made some good progress. We're all continuing to work on this. It's a significant decrease from when we adopted the budget, obviously, but we're not out of the woods yet. Items like the Prop 218 funds, the sewer and saltwater funds continue to be our problem children, if you will, and that they are underfunded. And it's our recommendation that in May timeframe, we convene a public financing workshop for the council to talk about mechanisms that we can consider to shore those funds up. Because if we continue to allow them to behave as they're set up today, we will continue to operate with a deficit unless revenues absolutely go through the stratosphere, as these funds will continue to draw from the reserves. It's just the reality. We want to be able to come to you with a budget surplus that can be set aside for not only reserves, but also projects, and we're hopeful that in the near future, we'll be doing that. But for now, we're still in the process of trying to eat away that deficit. So, on the topic of planning for the future and thinking about that, we're going to embark on a classification and compensation study, along with our employees, so that we can determine any adjustments that need to be made there. We want to make you aware that we are expecting the PERS retirement rates to increase in the coming years, so it's something else to keep in mind. And we have large projects that are looming out there that we all know we need to address, notably the mole and the fuel dock. So just some big items out there that we need to consider. So, at this point, I'm available, and of course Gina's available. If you have questions, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. I guess let's start with the audience. Anyone in the audience have any questions about the mid-year budget review process and staff's findings? No one coming forward? Counsel? One of the things you missed, Ben, in your dissertation, we don't have enough, we don't have any money set aside for the mole, a little bit, 500,000.
Right, we do.
And the fuel dock?
We need to set that aside in the coming-
And the one item that you missed was our sewer infrastructure collection system. We're doing a little bit of stuff, but we still have a significant amount of work to do there in order to keep up with our baywater quality issues that are going to be looming come, what's the final date, in June, where there's going to be no discharge requirements, and then fines and penalties and things as a result of that?
Right, and I guess the other thing on that topic that we need to bring up again is that we will be working with any developer coming to the city in the future in that same vein, because we need to have anything that is built here address the infrastructure as part of the project. It can't be that the city plays catch-up after the project is implemented. It has to be upfront, because we're at capacity, basically. We're very near capacity.
Right.
All salient points.
Excellent. So, the sky is not falling, but we still have a lot of work to do.
Agreed.
It's getting lower, though. 700,000's better than 1.6, so-
That's right.
Good job there.
And good job, we've made some progress, so kudos to staff for that.
One thing that would be nice for the budget process is that we go back and we try to capture the unexpected repairs that have been occurring for the last five or six years in the sewer system and the salt system, so we can have a trend, so we can use that to try to set up some reserves. I know it's not going to repeat, but it would be an indicator.
Agreed.
Well, and I think the reality is, is that we're dealing with the saltwater system, and we're always going to have repairs. You know, we're not going to be replacing valves every year, but if there's 70 valves that are included in the saltwater system, and we're doing, you know, 20% of them every year for the next-
I think we need to consider, in the very long term, a different type of-
Different approach.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Not sustainable.
And it would be nice to be forward-thinking and plan through that process, rather than what we've been, is reactionary and fixing it as it's breaking on a holiday weekend, and we have half the town shut off of saltwater, and nobody can flush toilets, and, you know, I don't think that, the end game, I don't think that that's what we intend, and that's how, but that's what's been landing in our lap.
Agreed.
And the isolations.
Right.
The isolations for the fire department, that's big.
I just got, I know all of you have been sitting out here, listening to all this budget stuff, and just a couple of things. The city started with about $10 million in reserve when we did the original budget. And based on the income we anticipated we were going to have and the expenses, we determined that we were going to be $1.6 million down. That meant that we would go from a reserve of $10 million, at the end of this fiscal year, which is June 30, we would have $8.3 million in reserve. The budget itself is $23,116,956. When I started up here, it was like a single-digit, like 9 million. And then the expenses are $23,805,927. So, we basically got pretty close to a $25 million budget. So, and we're making good progress, and the thing that impressed me is our confidence factor went from 80% to 90%. That is, the confidence in these numbers have increased by 10% because we're digging down and getting better data, better numbers, and that will be continuing. So, finance department did a good job. Gina and her people really came through and given us some good financial information. Good job. Thanks.
So we will receive and file the fiscal year 1314 mid-year budget review. Why don't we move to the housing authority? Roll call, Denise?
Commissioner Morrow.
Here.
Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Commissioner Ponce.
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Here.
And Chairman Kennedy.
Here.
Oral communications. Anyone in the audience care to address the housing authority for any business that is not currently on our agenda, you may now come forward. Consent calendar.
Yes, we have two items on the consent calendar, actions from the March 4 meeting, as well as code changes for the required housing element and facilitation of affordable housing development.
There's two items on the consent. Anybody, any member of the audience care to pull an item for further discussion of the two items on consent? Counsel? Anyone care to entertain a motion on the two items presented before us?
I make a motion to approve the two items.
Second. Call for a vote, please.
All eyes.
Okay. There's not any general business. Commissioners' reports? Scott, anything? Okay. We will adjourn the housing authority. Go back to the council meeting. City managers' report-
No, you have another meeting.
Yeah.
Which one? Hospital?
Hospital.
Call to order, Denise? Roll call?
Just in case somebody left. Trustee Hernandez.
Here.
Trustee Kennedy.
Here.
Trustee Olson.
Here.
Trustee Morrow.
Here.
And Chairman Ponce.
Here.
And Chairman Ponse?
Here. Any announcements?
No.
Written communications?
None.
No presentations? Anyone wishing to speak in regards to the hospital at this time, please come forward. Seeing no mad rush, consent calendar?
Yes, two items on the consent calendar. Board of Trustees, actions from the February 18 meeting as well as the CEO and CFO's report from February and January respectively.
Anyone wishing to pull an item? Anyone in the audience wishing to pull an item? Can we get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the actions and receive and file the CEO's report. And CFO.
Second.
Call for a vote?
All ayes.
General business? None. Chair's report? I have none. Members' report?
Question?
Yes.
Is it true that our City of Avalon insurance for the physical therapies is not accepted at our hospital? For the... That is true.
We have a number of... Due to the contractual arrangement that the hospital has with the IPA, we have gaps like that, yes.
If I'm not mistaken, we own the hospital.
That's a true statement.
Can we sit down and talk to the hospital and find out why we can't get our employees covered under their...
Yeah, and I have spoke with John about this, and I know the reason why, and we can continue to have a discussion. The bottom line is the hospital has found a model that allows them to be profitable. And that model that they're using does not necessarily ensure that all of our employees with all the various insurance offerings that we have are 100 percent covered. However, we can certainly strongly encourage John to pursue some other contracts such that we would have that coverage provided.
Do we know what the difference between Torrance IPA and Memorial IPA would be for the hospital?
I don't know what the cost difference would be for them, and I would probably have to go through John to find that, but I would be happy to do that.
Thanks. Thank you, sir.
Anyone else?
And let's, you know, when you're having that conversation, let's remind John that it wasn't but 10 or 11 years ago where the city was taking $500,000 a year out of its coffers to keep it flush.
More than that.
On average.
Sure.
No, on that note, I take a little offense. The people on that board worked really hard to get it where it is today. Holy! We were there, yes.
I don't disagree with that.
I'm just saying, just saying.
It would be nice that we take care of our own and not have to give somebody a day off of work to go over town to get a one...
I agree. I agree.
We're on the same page, then.
All right. Then we're adjourned.
City manager report?
I have none, thank you.
Yeah, as Ben indicated, in May, we're going to have a public finance meeting that purposes to discuss with the council and the public the options available for addressing some of the long-term infrastructures, issues and fundings, and how to pay for all the infrastructure that the state has required us to do. So if council has any, would like, I'm going to have Warren Dibbin, who's the head of our Public Finance Department, be here to be able to discuss all the tools available to public entities to finance public works, projects, short-term and long-term. If you have any questions, you'd like me to have them be prepared to answer, just provide them to me. And again, it'll be part of the regular council meeting, probably be a bi-mhour presentation. It'll be very in-depth about all the tools the cities have to finance these kind of infrastructure improvements.
And which council meeting you intended?
It's probably going to be the first meeting in May.
First meeting in May, okay.
I'm good.
I noticed down at the metro project, they have a really, really, really big pump, and they have some plumbed it into the sewer system. Dennis, that really, really big pump, it's plumbed in the sewer system? That's going to be pumping saltwater intrusion, saltwater comes into the pit?
Dennis, why don't you come on up to the podium, if you would, please?
It's pumped out to the... But that gets pumped back out to the sewer pipe, right?
Yeah, I'm just wondering to...
It doesn't go?
Sorry, councilman, I didn't quite hear you.
Down at the vault project?
Yes, sir.
There's a really big pump?
Yes, sir.
That's hooked up to a really big water line that's dumping in the sewer. I'm assuming that's pumping out the intrusion from the pit?
It's groundwater.
Groundwater?
Yes, it's a groundwater pump. There's less groundwater than they anticipated. The pump can be throttled down. Environ and myself met with Henkels today, and they are going to be sucking some of the water out of the ground. It's going in that Baker tank that you see, which is a certified desilting basin. And the water that comes out of it, it separates the fines and the dirt. The water that comes out of it should be suitable for Environ to put in the sewage system and treat it, and everything looks good. It looks like a very big pump. It is for the application, but like I say, it can be throttled down, and we're pretty happy with the progress so far.
Is there a particular time of day that Environ wants that?
Yeah, Environ can handle it. We've got to... Yeah, it's winter time. Keep in mind, this vault, the lower vaults, are the only one that's going to have this situation. Things look good. We're hoping to set the new vaults in about a week. And so this de-watering, this big pump that you see, councilman, should only be pumping water for about four to five days. It's a four-inch pump, it's a big one, it's old. It's old.
Dennis, the mess in front of the Pancake Cottage, when's that going to be done?
We're starting demolition of Phase Two tomorrow morning. It's hard to say. We don't anticipate too many problems. We have to go almost to the wall of the Pancake Cottage on Phase Two. I'm hoping that we can have it poured or demoed, formed, and new rebar installed in about eight working days. After that, we need at least, to be safe, two to three weeks of concrete curing before we can put traffic on it.
So maybe the middle of April?
Yeah, I believe your staff report gives an April 14 date. I don't believe that's too optimistic. I think it's fairly reasonable to think we can do that by April 14 without any glitches or without any problems. We're awful sorry we're getting into the season, but at least we're getting it now. And hopefully, when it's done, we'll have safe access for the public.
And then April 15, any vehicle, it doesn't matter how much weight it is, can go over that culvert, right?
It's going to be back to normal, councilman. That is, of course, we're going to be monitoring the cylinders, the brakes, and make sure that our concrete comes up to strength. But we're pretty confident that April 14, 15, we'll be able to open it up to regular traffic.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Dennis, how much of that culvert is under the building?
The culvert extends under...
So is there any plan to repair that culvert that's underneath the building?
At this present time, no. I'm in discussions with one of the Island Company's representatives. We're going to be reviewing some information tomorrow, some photos. There is some deterioration under the restaurant as well, and we're going to be discussing that. That is going to have to be dealt with by whomever. It's not as bad as under Crescent Avenue. And then we also have to keep in mind that downstream from Crescent Avenue towards the ocean, we have some failing concrete issues. It's not an immediate concern, but it will be in the future. As I was telling councilman this afternoon in my office, that channel concrete and rebar is 100 years old. It's just about time.
You should be selling on eBay.
The councilman and I probably remember when it was being built.
Hey, Dennis, before you go, are you giving updates? What about the latest update on Lower Terrace?
Lower Terrace is going well. We had some design issues. I believe the staff report might have informed you of that. They were anticipated. In constructing the caissons, one aspect of the design was to drill diagonal of what we call tiebacks into the roadway, and unfortunately, they're hitting the sewer. But we've adjusted it. We anticipated some issues there. We accounted for it in the budget. So as far as the budget is concerned, we're all okay there. And our engineer came out Friday. We spent most of the day with Friday, with him on Friday. And there could be some cost savings in the future with some modified designs that we've also anticipated, so we're hoping that that's going to go well.
So the timeframe on this to finish?
They're on schedule. They should be completed late April, early June. I'm hoping to pave...
We'll skip May?
Early June, May, mid-May. We're hoping to pave the asphalt by early June.
Thank you, Dennis. Thank you.
I have one more thing. We have a condo in Long Beach, and we got the San Tason District Notice of Public Hearing, a Prop 218 notice. Really well done, I think. It lays out what they've done to save money, what they're doing, what their plans are for future stuff. And I think that since we're going to be having some Prop 218 hearings upcoming, we should probably cheat, steal some of this stuff, so we pass this over to Ben.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Can you believe it? Not a closed session? All right, we're adjourned.